The title, any objection?
The second page to put the same word or other. Second page. It's all the underscored.
I see. All right, on page two, there is an amendment or other on line 15 on page two. Hearing no objection.
Then page three.
On page three, there's a strikeout, delete of C, renumbering. Any objection to the definition being deleted? And then adding a new G.
On page four.
Risk assessment on page four.
And there's on line 20 where it says off, that should be or. The theft or. So the school anti-prevent theft or vandalism of valuable school property.
So, any objection to the amendments made on page four? Please.
Just a quick question to the author, Mrs. Speaker and Madam Speaker. I take it that this would open the opportunity to be able to explore other options such as hiring of security guards. And my understanding and my reading of that is primarily because it says risk assessment means an assessment of each school's surveillance needs, whether by camera, closed circuit TV, or other electronic or non-electronic form of surveillance to stop or deter illegal intrusion to that school and to prevent theft or vandalism of valuable school property. So if that's my interpretation, Mrs. Speaker and Madam Speaker, that in fact it would open the option so that it would lean towards the Department of Education and the superintendent to provide their appropriate recommendation and their findings in terms of utilizing not only electronic but also the possibility of security detail. Would that be an appropriate interpretation, Madam Speaker, Mrs. Speaker?
To you, Yod.
Yes, yes, Mr. Speaker. I mean, of course, when you read it, you're right, or non-electronic, that yes, it could very well mean that, so, but this should be determined, like I say, by the school. So it's not, I'm not making that determination for them.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and thank you, Mr. Speaker. I think that that only enhances the legislation from the original introduction because if you recall back in a brief conversation, I was exploring the possibility of at least expanding it and allowing the Department of Education that flexibility in making that decision. So I commend the sponsor, Speaker Wampat, for certainly providing that flexibility to the Department of Education because rightfully so. They should be making that recommendation back to either this body in terms of investing anywhere from $800,000 or $1.2 million for this electronic system on behalf of the people of Guam. So I thank you for the opportunity to comment. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
In that position, concern is underscored by the amendment on page five, which removes the system-wide comprehensive study and includes a risk assessments that determines each school needs. So any objection to the amendment on page five?
Mr. Speaker, my concern then is that is this risk assessment going to develop the specifications for the RFP? Because in the comprehensive study, part of the study would be to develop the specifications for an appropriate one. But the risk assessment is just to identify those, the different alternatives, and who's going to then develop the specifications?
To you, Madam Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. It's actually the superintendent because the superintendent then will either have this performed or whether he wants to bring in somebody else to do this, to basically tailor make it for each individual school. So it will be the superintendent. It will still be always the department who make that determination of what its needs are.
Does that answer your question? I believe I've exhausted all the amendments and there's been no objection. On the motion to move the bill back down to the voting file. No objection. We'll just break for a short recess and the speak resume.
The legislature is back in session. We're now in the voting file. And everybody should have copies of engrossed bills. So bill number 5-32 LS. Bill number 5-32 LS, as substituted by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parts, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Tommy Morrison, V. Anthony Ada, Frank B. Uggan Jr., Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., Chris M. Duñez. An act to add a new subsection, I'm sorry, 40143 to chapter 40 of Title V, Guam Code annotated relative to placing the former FQ Sanchez Elementary School facility under the jurisdiction of the Umati Mayor's office. Roll call.
Madam Speaker, first point of order.
Yes.
Madam Speaker, I've asked the clerks that when they read the member's name, that after the member votes, they would repeat what that, how that member voted, then proceed to the next member. So I just raise as a point of order, as a point of information in how these votes will be recorded so the public will know exactly how we're voting. So for example, they'll say the first senator's name, and then if the senator says a or nay or however they choose to vote, the clerk will say exactly how they believe that senator voted. They would say yea, and then we go on to the next member. Okay, Madam Speaker? Thank you.
Yes, and thank you very much because the listening audience are not hearing the votes because you're not speaking into the microphone. Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Good morning. Aye.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispecho.
Aye.
Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis. Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Substitute bill number 5-32 LS received 15 yea votes. Substitute bill number 5-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 6-32 LS.
Bill number 6-32 LS, as substituted by the Committee on the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Veterans Affairs, Homeland Security and Judiciary, and amended on the floor. Introduced by Brant McCready, DG Rodriguez Jr., FB Uggan Jr., V. Anthony Ada, MT Limteaco, Tommy Morrison, Chris M. Duñez, MF Q Sinicalis, RJ Rispecho. An act to amend sections 25.15 and 25.20 of chapter 25, Title IX, Guam Code annotated relative to strengthening the penalties for crimes involving criminal sexual conduct and to be cited as the Predator Prevention Act.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispecho. Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Substitute bill number 6-32 LS received 15 yea votes. Substitute bill number 6-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 7-32 COR.
Bill number 7-32 COR, as amended on the floor. Introduced by Judith T. Wampat, EDD, Vicente Ben C. Pangolinen, T.R. Munya Barnes. An act to add a new section 80105 subsection I to chapter 80 of Title 21, Guam Code annotated relative to the transfer of property under the jurisdiction of the Port Authority of Guam to the jurisdiction of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission.
Roll call. Senator Ada.
Aye.
Senator Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispecho.
Aye.
Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Bill number 7-32 COR received 15 yea votes. Bill number 7-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 31-32 COR.
Bill number 31-32 COR, introduced by V. Anthony Ada. An act to add a new section 5132 to part D of Article II, Chapter 5 of Title V, Guam Code annotated relative to the retention of procurement-related electronic mail, email correspondences.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispecho.
Yes.
Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Bill number 31-32 COR received 15 yea votes. Bill number 31-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 32-32 COR.
Bill number 32-32 COR, as amended on the floor. Introduced by V. Anthony Ada, Vicente Ben C. Pangolinen. An act to add a new subsection E to section 5008 of part A, Article 1 of chapter 5 of Title V, Guam Code annotated relative to prohibiting government of Guam branches, departments, agencies, and instrumentalities from excluding local businesses from the procurement process.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Tony, Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez.
Yes.
Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Limteaco.
Aye.
Senator Limteaco, aye. Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes.
Okay.
Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen.
Aye.
Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispecho.
Yes.
Senator Rispecho, aye. Senator Rodriguez.
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicalis.
Yes.
Senator Sinicalis, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Bill number 32-32 COR received 15 yea votes. Bill number 32-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill number 54-32 COR.
Bill number 54-32 COR, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parts- Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land. Introduced by Vicente Ben C. Pangolinen, MF Houston Nicholas. An act to amend Sections 511005 and 511006 and to add new Sections 511007 and 511008 to Article 10 of Chapter 51, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, and to add a new Section 5120 to Part B of Article 2, Chapter 5 of Title 5 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the management of the host community fund.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lim Tiyako. Senator Lim Tiyako, aye. Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Raspicio. Senator Raspicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicolas. Senator Sinicolas, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Amended Bill Number 54-32 COR, received fifteen yea votes. Amended Bill Number 54-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 29-32 COR.
Bill Number 29-32 COR, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation and Land, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Vicente Ben C. Pangolinen, BJF Cruz. An act to add new Sections 60114.1 and 60114.2 to Article 1 of Chapter 60 of Title 21 Guam Code Annotated, and to amend Section 26203 Subsection A of Article 2 of Chapter 26 and Section 24401 Subsection A of Article 4 of Chapter 24, all of Title 11 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Competitive Equalization Act on the leasing of government of Guam property.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
No.
Senator Tom Ada, nay. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, pass. Senator Lim Tiyako. Senator Lim Tiyako, pass. Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Raspicio. Senator Raspicio, nay. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicolas.
Yes.
Senator Sinicolas, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, nay. Senator Lim Tiyako. Senator Lim Tiyako, nay. Amended Bill Number 29-32 COR, received fifteen yea votes and four nay votes. Eleven yea votes, four nay votes. Amended Bill Number 29-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 41-32 LS.
Bill Number 41-32 LS, as substituted by the Committee on the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Homeland Security, Veterans Affairs and Judiciary. Introduced by Frank B. Uggan Jr., BJF Cruz, Judith T. Wampat EDD, V. Anthony Ada, TC Ada, Chris M. Duñez, M. Telem Tiyako, Brant T. McCready, Tommy Morrison, TR Munya Barnes, Vicente Ben C. Pangolinen, RJ Raspicio, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Michael F. Houston Nicholas, Aileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D. An act to amend Sections 30.20, 30.32 Subsection B, 30.40, and 30.80 of Chapter 30, Title IX Guam Code Annotated, relative to strengthening the penalties for crimes of family violence.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lim Tiyako. Senator Lim Tiyako, aye. Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Raspicio. Senator Raspicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicolas.
Yes.
Senator Sinicolas, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Aye.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Substitute Bill Number 41-32 LS, received fifteen yea votes. Substitute Bill Number 41-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 43-32 COR.
Bill Number 43-32 COR, as substituted by the Committee on the Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Homeland Security, Veterans Affairs and Judiciary. Introduced by BJF Cruz, Judith T. Wampat EDD. An act to add a new subsection MM to Section 67.100 of Article 1 of Chapter 67 of Title IX Guam Code Annotated, and to amend Item F of Appendix A of Public Law 31-164, and to add a new subsection 44, relative to the synthetic cannabinoids.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lim Tiyako. Senator Lim Tiyako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Raspicio. Senator Raspicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicolas. Senator Sinicolas, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Substitute Bill Number 43-32 COR, received fifteen yea votes. Substitute Bill Number 43-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 23-32.
Bill Number 23-32 COR, as amended by the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing and Hagatna Restoration and Redevelopment Authority, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Aileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., TR Munya Barnes. An act to add a new Section 40144 and amend Item 1 of Section 40113 Subsection B of Chapter 40, Title 5 Guam Code Annotated, relative to placing the former Agate Fire Station under the administrative jurisdiction of the Agate Mayor's Office.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lim Tiyako. Senator Lim Tiyako, aye. Senator McCready.
Aye.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, pass. Senator Raspicio. Senator Raspicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicolas. Senator Sinicolas, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Ben. Senator Ben, nay. Amended Bill Number 23-32 COR, received fourteen yea votes and one nay vote. Amended Bill Number 23-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 46-32 LS.
Bill Number 46-32 LS, introduced by TR Munya Barnes. An act to amend Subsections C and H of Section 10108 of Article 1, Chapter 10 of Title 5 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the right of inspection.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lim Tiyako. Senator Lim Tiyako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Raspicio. Senator Raspicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicolas. Senator Sinicolas, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Bill Number 43-32 LS, received fifteen yea votes. Bill Number 46-32 is duly passed by this body. Resolution Number 58-32 COR.
Resolution Number 58-32 COR, as amended by the author and further amended on the floor. Introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Aileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., Judith T. Wampat EDD, TR Munya Barnes, Brant T. McCready, M. Telem Tiyako. Relative to the consideration of the Self Advocacy in Action (SACA) to become a state self advocacy organization of Guam, as recommended by the Guam Developmental Disabilities Council, GDDC, to promote and support the development of leadership and self advocacy among people with developmental disabilities, family members and the island community.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada.
Aye.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lim Tiyako. Senator Lim Tiyako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Raspicio. Senator Raspicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicolas. Senator Sinicolas, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Resolution, amended resolution Number 58-32, received fifteen yea votes. Amended resolution Number 58-32 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 4-32 LS.
Bill Number 4-32 LS, as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs, and further substituted and amended on the floor. Introduced by Tommy Morrison, BJF Cruz, V. Anthony Ada, Chris M. Duñez, Michael F. Houston Nicholas, TC Ada, Aileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., Michael Telem Tiyako, Brant T. McCready, RJ Raspicio. An act to repeal and reenact Article 2 of Chapter 20 of Title 5 Guam Code Annotated, relative to establishing the Office of Technology.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, pass. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lim Tiyako. Senator Lim Tiyako, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, pass. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, pass. Senator Raspicio. Senator Raspicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Sinicolas. Senator Sinicolas, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Pass.
Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, pass. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye.
Substitute Bill Number four dash thirty-two LS, received fifteen yea votes. Substitute Bill Number four dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Resolution Number four dash thirty-two.
Resolution four dash thirty-two COR, as amended by the author and further amended on the floor. Introduced by R.J. Risfischo, Judith T. Wampat, E.D.D., B.J.F. Cruz, M.F. Huston-Nikolas, T.C. Ada, V. Anthony Ada, T.R. Munya Barnes, Brant T. McCready, Tommy Morrison, M.T. Lintiaco, Frank B. Uggan Jr. Relative to Renewing Guam's Call for Justice with Respect to War Reparations and Calling for Action by the U.S. Congress on this issue, and utilizing offsets such as the unpaid federal obligation for the impact of the compacts of free association in order to appropriate such sums as may be necessary for this purpose and to address other concerns of the people of Guam.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. I'm sorry, Vice Speaker? Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, nay. Senator Risfischo. Senator Risfischo, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, nay. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, pass. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, nay. Speaker Wampat.
Yes. Speaker Wampat, aye. Amended Resolution Number four dash thirty-two COR, received eleven yea votes and four nay votes. Amended Resolution Number four dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Resolution Number eighty-seven dash thirty-two LS.
Resolution Number eighty-seven dash thirty-two LS, as amended on the floor, introduced by Committee on Rules. Relative to Adding a New Part G to Rule Twenty of the Standing Rules of the Minutantai Dos Naliosa Turin Guahan to Establish a Drug-Free Workplace Policy within the Guam Legislature.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, pass. Senator Risfischo. Senator Risfischo, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye.
Resolution Number eighty-seven dash thirty-two LS, received fifteen yea votes. Resolution Number eighty-seven dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. Bill Number one dash thirty-two LS.
Bill Number one dash thirty-two LS, as amended by the Committee on Appropriations, Public Debt, Legal Affairs, Retirement, Public Parks, Recreation, Historic Preservation, and further substituted on the floor and amended on the floor. Introduced by Judith T. Wampat, E.D.D., Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Eileen Yamashita, Ph.D., Vicente Bency Pangolinen. An Act to Add a New Chapter Fifty-eight C to Title V Guam Code Annotated, and a new subsection S to Section Three One Zero Two Point One of Article One, Chapter Three of Title Seventeen, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to the Installation and Maintenance of Electronic or Other Security Systems at All Guam Public Schools, to be known as the Secure Our Schools Act of two thousand thirteen.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, pass. Senator Risfischo. Senator Risfischo, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, pass. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat. Bill one. Aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, nay. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, nay.
Amended Bill Number one dash thirty-two LS, received thirteen yea votes, two nay votes. Amended Bill Number one dash thirty-two LS is duly passed by this body. Bill Number forty-four dash thirty-two COR.
Bill Number forty-four dash thirty-two COR, as substituted by the Committee on General Government Operations and Cultural Affairs and amended on the floor. Introduced by Judith T. Wampat, E.D.D., Eileen A. Yamashita, Ph.D., B.J.F. Cruz, R.J. Risfischo. An Act to Amend Section Two Three One 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 of Chapter Twenty-three, Division Two, Title V Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Authorizing the Use of Government of Guam Travel Mileage Benefits to Support Off-Island Medical Referrals and Off-Island Student Travel Involving Academic, Sports, and Cultural Activities.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, nay. Senator Risfischo. Senator Risfischo, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, nay. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, nay.
Substitute Bill Number forty-four dash thirty-two COR, received twelve yea votes, three nay votes. Substitute Bill Number forty-four dash thirty-two is duly passed by this body. On the matter of vetoed Bill Number Nine Dash Thirty-Two, notwithstanding the objections of the Governor. Clerk, if you can read the title.
Bill Number Nine Dash Thirty-Two COR is amended on the floor. Introduced by Vicente Bency Pangolinen, B.J.F. Cruz, Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr. An Act to Add New Sections Five Eight One Four Eight, Five Eight One Four Eight Point One, Five Eight One Four Eight Point Two, Five Eight One Four Eight Point Three, and Five Eight One Four Nine, and to amend Sections Five Eight One Two Six and Five Eight One One Five Subsection C, all of Chapter Fifty-Eight of Title Twelve, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Establishing the Qualifying Certificate Review Board and the Qualifying Certificate Accountability and Transparency Website, and amending Conflicts of Interest provisions.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, pass. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, nay. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, nay. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Risfischo. Senator Risfischo, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, nay. Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye.
Vetoed Bill, I mean, notwithstanding, of course, the Governor's objection to vetoed Bill Number Nine Dash Thirty-Two, the votes are nine yea votes and six nay votes. Vetoed Bill Number Nine Dash Thirty-Two failed to get the required votes to be overwritten by this body. On the nomination of Mr. Victor F. Cruz to serve as... Oh, that, I'm sorry. I just saw it here, right, was faded out. On the nomination of Ms. Lauralie T. Crisostomu to serve as Director of Bureau of Statistics and Plans. Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, pass. Senator Risfischo. Senator Risfischo, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, pass. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, nay. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, pass. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, nay. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, nay. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, nay.
On the appointment of Ms. Lauralee T. Crisostomu to serve as the Director of Bureau of Statistics and Plans and she received eleven yea votes, four nay votes. Ms. Lauralee T. Crisostomu is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Ms. Marceline Cruz Santos to serve as Member of the Council on Mental Health and Substance Abuse, known as the Advisory Council. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Vice Speaker, you're standing.
I just wanted to ask indulgence of the body to be allowed to recuse myself. This is my sister.
Should the Vice Speaker be recused from voting for Ms. Marceline Cruz Santos? No objections, so ordered. So all in favor, please raise your hand. Marceline Cruz Santos. Ms. Marceline Cruz Santos received fourteen yea votes and one excused or recused from voting. She is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Mr. Palacio S. Sardoma to serve as Member of the Board of Equalization, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Palacio S. Sardoma received unanimous support. He is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Mr. William E. Stanley II to serve as Member of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. William E. Stanley II received fifteen yea votes and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Sandra F. Santos to serve as a Member of the Guam Housing Corporation Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Sandra F. Santos received unanimous support and she is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Glenn A. Meno to serve as Member of the Guam Housing Corporation Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Glenn A. Meno received unanimous support and he's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Ms. Maryliss Beneventi to serve as Member of the Council on Mental Health and Substance Abuse, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Maryliss Beneventi received unanimous support and she's duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Mr. Ray M. Vega to serve as Director of the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, aye. Senator Lintiaco. Senator Lintiaco, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, pass. Senator Pangolinen. Senator Pangolinen, aye. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rispicio, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, aye. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, pass. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Munya Barnes, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Yamashita. Senator Yamashita, aye.
On the appointment of Mr. Ray M. Vega to serve as the Director of the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, he received fifteen yea votes. Mr. Vega is duly confirmed by this body. We've exhausted everything on the voting file. Senator Rispicio, you recognize? Senator Rispicio.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn this session subject to the call of the Speaker.
So we're going, session then is adjourned subject to the call of the Speaker.